We're beginning this evening with remote electronic attendance.
I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Second Ward Alderman David Parker, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Alderman at Large Sonia Berg at the committee of the whole Kansas City Council meetings of August 11th and 20th.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Berg.
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
But I don't think that yes or that bit, but it's not working.
We can hear you, Alderman Parker.
Oh, it doesn't sound, it looks like a mute isn't it?
It's not a great connection, but we could hear you say aye. How we can win?
Come on. Good enough.
Alderman Went said aye.
Okay. Alderman Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Simmaker?
Waldron?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Thank you. We're beginning this evening with an appointment. I'd like to recommend to the council an appointment of Just Dismar to the Historic Preservation Commission for a full three-year term to expire April 30th, 2023. I would entertain a motion to support that.
Motion to approve?
Sir.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please.
Alderman Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Thank you very much. We have a presentation this evening, a presentation of life-saving awards to police officers Kevin Ott and Jeffrey Leinhart. Chief call.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm here on two separate awards, so I'd like to call for Officer Kevin Ott for the first award. You'll note that when I start telling you the dates that we're a little behind schedule. I apologize for not bringing this to your attention sooner as the coronavirus kind of put us behind. But on Friday, January 3rd, at approximately 2:00 PM, Officer Kevin Ott responded to a 911 call from Lisa Rubocaba who had found her father, Alfonso Rubocaba, unresponsive in his bedroom after accidentally overdosing on pain medication. Upon arrival, Officer Ott found Mr. Rubocaba pale, unresponsive, with his eyes rolled back, and he was not breathing. Upon determining that Mr. Rubocaba had no pulse, Officer Ott immediately initiated CPR. Another officer arrived shortly thereafter, and despite being attacked by the family dog, assisted giving rescue breaths, and Officer Ott continued giving chest compressions. Mr. Rubocaba began breathing again on his own, and his pulse was restored. The Moline Fire Department paramedics arrived on scene and revived Mr. Rubocaba by administering Narcan. Mr. Rubocaba was transported to the hospital for treatment. Lieutenant Hutton followed up at a later time on January 22nd and met with the family and advised that Mr. Rubocaba was home and doing well. It was a little sore for a few days from the chest compressions, but otherwise was doing well. The dog that attacked the officers is also doing well. So, Officer Ott, your prompt and alert actions that day resulted in saving a human life. And so today, although we tried to do it in late February, early March, I apologize for the delay, but I'd like to formally present you with the Moline Police Department Life Saving Award before the members of the public and the Moline City Council, and I congratulate you on a job well done. Can you take it again? I didn't smile. Our second award this evening, I'd like to call for Officer Jeff Leinhart. On Friday, May 1st, at just a little after midnight, Officer Leinhart was dispatched to the I-74 Bridge regarding a mentally ill subject who was standing on the edge of the bridge. Upon arrival on scene, Officer Leinhart located the victim's vehicle unoccupied in the center span of the bridge. Following the sound of a female crying, he was able to locate an individual seated on a beam beyond the bridge railing. The beam was positioned high above the river, placing the victim in grave danger. Without hesitation, Officer Leinhart acted by quickly grabbing the female, lifting her over the railing to safety, risking his own life to save the life of the victim. Officer Leinhart, your prompt and alert actions that day resulted in saving a human life. So tonight, I'd like to formally present you with the Moline Police Department Life Saving Award before the members of the public and the members of the city council, and congratulate you on a job well done. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chief. Do we have any questions on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on.
There is one, Chapter 19.
Oh, yes. We're pulling Chapter 19 from the...
I'm sorry, it's number six on the council agenda.
Forgive me. Item number six on the council agenda has been pulled by stack. We'll move now into the agenda items. Item number one, the Center for Youth and Family Services Collaboration and Business Associate Agreements. Chief call.
I feel like we've been here before. Well, good evening. Thank you, Mayor, council. Back on July 21st, 2020, I stood before you with a concept to partner police and social work into a new model for overlapping police services to the citizens that we serve. So today, I'm back before you to bring a memorandum of understanding and a business agreement to enter into that agreement between the city of Moline and the Center for Youth and Family Solutions. Honestly, I need to mention, because I would be remiss if I didn't thank Dirk Price, our corporate counsel, for the legal assistance in navigating this unique and uncharted territory. Dirk has been fantastic in putting up with maybe some wild ideas that floated past him or drafting unusual legal documents that didn't have templates for. Maybe he does, he just didn't tell me these things. But he's been instrumental in guiding us through the legal challenges needed to complete this partnership. So I really thank you for that work. And I know it's been quite a bit that I've asked on him, and really largely because of his work, we have a memorandum of agreement with you. Second, I'd like to introduce Tony Riordan, who's here with us tonight. Tony is the chief operating officer for the Center for Youth and Family Solutions. We are proud and excited to embark on this journey to establish a new model for enhanced social work partnerships. I've known Tony for a few years, largely because I coached his daughter in club soccer at our very own Green Valley Sports Complex. And Tony's a native Moliner who's been in social work for decades. And I asked Tony to stop by the police department back June 15th. I called him up and I said, hey, I'd like to have a conversation on how we could better collaborate with social services and get his input. And over the following two months, almost exactly two months, we have crafted a new partnership with exciting possibilities. And again, Tony and his staff have put in a lot of work on this project, and I'd also like to thank him for helping guide me through this, because certainly, two areas here, legal and social work, not in my wheelhouse. But so let me be clear tonight, though, that we're not expecting, and this MOU does not change necessarily the way we're delivering services. The social workers are not answering 911 calls with this agreement. That's not what this partnership is before you tonight. So I just want to quickly go over this program so you have a better understanding on what we'll be doing here in Moline. The police department, as you know, makes house calls 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for an unlimited list of services, including storms. But hundreds of calls per year involve situations where a social worker could be of assistance. Some of them are law enforcement related, and some of them are not. So to quote a famous radio broadcaster, Paul Harvey, "The policeman must be a minister, a social worker, a diplomat, a tough guy, and a gentleman." And the purpose of this agreement is establish a continuing working relationship and increase access to social work services to individuals that come in contact with the police department who present the need for social work referral or intervention. This agreement is intended to enhance access to social work assistance and the opportunity that allows us to co-locate social workers inside the Moline Police Department. So the Center for Youth and Family Solutions has identified a two-phase approach that is in the MOU. The first phase will consist of enhanced collaboration in serving targeted populations identified in the existing comprehensive community-based youth services and homeless youth programs already funded by the Department of Human Services. Phase two will expand the population served to youth, adults, and families in a more expansive model of service and education, crisis response, casework, and clinical services. Phase two is a longer-term project, but also covered in this MOU. So if approved tonight by the council, we would begin this program next week, starting with orientation and training of our combined staff. And then as this works its way through the legislative process, that will give us some time to collaborate with our school resource officers before school begins this fall, get some of the operations worked out. And then eventually, the social workers will be embedded with our juvenile investigative unit and highly involved with our school resource officers, provide diversion and intervention programs to help divert the individual from being cast into criminal justice system. Now, I want to make it clear that the Center for Youth and Family Solutions functions are not investigative enforcement or intelligence gathering divisions of the Moline Police Department. The duty of CYFS will be to aid citizens in certain situations that are beyond the scope and capabilities of the police officers. This MOU establishes that each entity has evidence of insurance, and the city has received a copy of suitable insurance coverage by CYFS. And I'd like you to also take note of two important provisions in the MOU. Paragraph 12 states that CYFS and its employees are independent of the city and are not employees of the city. And paragraph 13 states that services provided in this agreement shall be at no charge to either party. This is collaboration and co-location of resources. Also attaches a business associate agreement, which assures that we will all safeguard protected health information under HIPAA. Finally, under paragraph 14, it talks about internal procedures, and I have drafted those procedures. I've collaborated with Tony. He has a copy of those, and we're satisfied with that. And we're working on a plan to implement them in this orientation phase once we get going with the boots on the ground, if you will. We have developed a smaller working group consisting of social workers and police officers to tackle the fine details of implementation. So to be transparent, there's going to be bumps in the road. This is a from-scratch program. We're not really modeling this off of an existing program and dumping it here. It's from scratch. So there's going to be bumps in the road as we go down this new path. The forging of path, new path, is not always smooth and is more likely to result in unexpected occurrences. So I'd ask you to bear with us as we roll this out over the next few months and probably a year. But we hope that this road leads to improvement and collaboration and problem-solving in our community. We have a lot of work still to do to understand the depth and breadth and demand of the needs of social work service. I sent a lot of stats to Tony to evaluate to see if this would be a viable thing, and he made a comment, wow, that's a lot of contacts. And we really need to get our hands dirty on this and roll up our sleeves to understand the true course the ship needs to sail. So in closing, to quote a poet, Robert Frost, "Two roads diverged in the woods, and I took the one last traveled by, and that has made all the difference." So before I make a recommendation to you, I'd like to offer Tony to make any comments that he would like about the program.
Thank you, Chief Call. I brought some brochures for our Rock Island office. Just some very brief background. We're actually in 37 counties in Illinois from here all the way to Indiana. This is one of our 11 branch offices. We serve over 20,000 people a year in the state of Illinois. We're the largest downstate and highest-rated foster care agency in Illinois. We've actually operated these programs in Rock Island County, the foster cities, for actually since the 60s. We used to operate the programs that were run by Catholic charities, and they chose to relieve themselves of the social service administration. And we felt like we needed to continue for continuity of services for all the foster children and families we serve. We started our own agency in 2012 from scratch. So I'm not afraid to start things that are crazy or sound crazy. I really would like to say we're really pleased with remarkable investment and sophistication of Chief Call and Lieutenant Carmen in this project. I think it speaks to the fact that the complex social issues we're facing in communities right now, it's not a zero-sum game. This is, there's not an either-or thing of removing resources from one entity and giving it to another. I think this is a both-and solution. I've been floored by the numbers that I've seen that Chief Call's numbers guy, by the way, has presented to me. And clearly, the police force is the first line of social support in our communities. And we're proud to partner with them. We're excited. As he said, there's probably going to be some bumps up the road. We're looking at some successful models nationally to apply here. We actually have staff that have worked in some highly sophisticated models out of the east that are going to be consulting on the project. They have experienced social work, they'll be involved. We're very confident this will be successful and a model that other communities will look to. And we're very excited and pleased to work with the community here. And I did grow up in Moline, just a couple blocks from here on 13th Street, so I have a lot of personal investment in the success here. I'll leave these here for your review later. And if you have any questions, Chief Call has my contact information. You're free to, anybody can contact me anytime. I live in Davenport, though, even though I oversee the entire state. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
So with that, the staff recommends that you approve the MOU and business associate agreement for you tonight.
We have a motion by Alderman Potter and a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this? Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Went.
My comment was just, I wanted to congratulate Chief Call and his team and Tony and his team. I really think that this is the future of policing and partnering with our community and to help our most vulnerable. And I couldn't be prouder about how Moline is moving forward and thinking outside the box to put things like this together. So thank you guys both for being the champion of these movements, and I really look forward to seeing the success you guys have in the future.
Thank you, Alderman Went. Are there any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. For the next one, too. The next item is the Illinois Department of Human Services Tobacco Grant. Chief call.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is an annual program. It's been in front of many of you many times in the past. We're seeking to enter into an intergovernmental agreement and accept the award of $5,280 to continue to conduct a retail education and enforcement program with tobacco retailers in our community. We have about 54 retail establishments that develop, sell tobacco products to our residents and visitors in the city of Moline. We've been doing this program for years and years, and over time, we find about 3% of violations at each check. And we do about three checks a year, and this is administered by our juvenile division and managed by our juvenile sergeant and investigation division. 30 days prior to each check, the state of Illinois sends us a packet of educational materials, and the juvenile sergeant goes out specifically in person to each one of those 54 establishments and provides them education, signage, helps them understand carding, new laws that come out. As you know, over the last few years, some of those tobacco product laws have changed. There's always new products out there. And so he provides that information about carding, signs, and new laws. So that's a very important component of this, is retail education. And we go back out again in undercover capacity and make sure they're doing it right. And so it establishes a program of local compliance monitoring to be implemented across municipalities across Illinois. So staff would recommend approval.
Motion to approve?
Sir.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Or is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item will be presented by Marty Vonix, purchasing controls and policies during state of emergency.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, to make sure that we have adequate controls over purchasing procurement of goods and services, particularly at this time, I am implementing additional management controls. And currently, we do not operate under, as I mentioned in the past, a purchase order system. So I'm recommending that we move to this type of system starting in 2021, and I'm working with the finance director to do that. But as it stands, what we'd like to do is create a, what I call a PO, purchase order system-like, which essentially changes what staff will require to do in order to purchase. And so requiring staff to provide more documentation is currently provided to the finance department administration. It will also lower the independent purchasing authority from the current 15,000 to 2,500. And the finance director and I are committed to swift and systematic approvals, assuming everything is in order. The only negative impact this might have on operations will be that department heads will probably need to plan a little bit more ahead of time and do a little bit more to show that they have the budget for the purchase, and it is a planned expenditure. So for emergency purchases, or this amount, particularly during off-hours, department heads are authorized to make the necessary purchases, but need to contact me as soon as possible with the necessary documentation. So emergency, of course, is anything that's considered life safety or the health and welfare of the community. Is there any questions? I think there's a resolution with an appendix attached to it for your consideration.
Are you looking for a motion to approve?
I'm sorry.
Are you looking for a motion to approve?
Yes, a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Alderman Potter, a second by Alderman Williams. Sorry. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm up next. I'm going to stay here.
Oh, well, I think that we have another that's gotten squeezed in. So, sorry. There is another. But you can come back up in just a moment.
Good evening, Mayor, council. So one of the very first things that anybody said to me when I started working as your corporate counsel was, we've got to get straightened up the election process for these offices. And it's that time of year again. From the very first day I started here, the clerk has been concerned about the election process. She wondered why there was such drama around it. We did all the research about the hybrid form of government you've had. We've answered those questions. And to Madam Clerk's credit, she's been on this. And the news is that on August 25th, those of you up for reelection, circulate your petitions. Not before, but beginning on August 25th. But in the course of doing this, I have to tell you that I'm baffled by how you got here in some ways. The citation in your code of ordinances is incorrect. You are not a village. You are a city. And the 1% requirement is completely incorrect. Just so you know where all this is coming from, a Madam Clerk has to look at it. Second, the person who's the chief legal counsel for the state board of elections for the last 15 years retired less than a year ago, and we scooped him up, and he works at Anson Lake. He's one of our people, Ken Menzel. And so delighted to have Ken on the team. I brought him into the whole Moline situation. And when he told me that, no, none of this is right, we've got some work to do, I pushed back pretty hard, because the last thing I said I wanted to do was in my very first election cycle in Moline, is tell the mayor she had to get five times the number of signatures she was previously told she had to get to run. But that's the facts. And I'm glad you're remote, because that's also true for you, Alderman Berg, as an Alderman at large. They have to get 263 signatures, because the provision of the municipal code that applies to a city is not the one for a village. And so I don't know where that advice came from. I don't understand the advice that was given. I also don't understand how the refuge of we're a hybrid form of government works, because the '92 referendum did take powers from the mayor and give them to the council and took some powers from the council and gave them to the city administrator, but you did not become a manager form of government. And so, yes, you're shy of that, but you remain a mayor and Alderman form of government. So those rules apply. So in this case, it's 263 is the minimum signatures for the mayor and the Alderman at large. For Ward 2, it's 38 signatures. For Ward 4, it's 34 signatures, and for Ward 6, it's 43. And that's because the rule that applies is the number of votes for that office the last time it was up for election. And obviously, the wards are smaller than the city at large. So that's where the numbers come from, and that's why they're a little different, and that's why they apply. So we've walked through all of this with the clerk. We've also walked through the calendar. The county publishes a calendar and sets the dates according to the election code. And for some reason, they walked that back with the clerk last time. She attended the county thing. We got the dates, and they changed the one. That's not the case. We're following the regular election code. We confirmed all of those dates today. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Madam Clerk. The packets are going to be ready tomorrow, I think?
Yep. Packets will be ready tomorrow. As Dirk said, Ken in his office has reviewed, and now he is reviewing the final. I feel very confident in the direction we've received from the current council. As Dirk said, back in 2019, which is first election that I did here at the city, there was some direction that was questionable, not quite sure why we were applying a hybrid form, but we're very clear now. And I feel very confident that this election is going to be very accurate and that we've got a very good council. So thank you.
So again, my thanks to Janine, because she's been concerned about it since the day I started. Now I can see why, because things were right. It could've been worse. We became the lawyers for a village outside of Chicago that used a caucus form of government, which is unusual. We had the thrill of telling them that they had been doing it incorrectly for 42 years. That went over really well. But them's the facts. And the reason it's important is because somebody could figure it out, get it right, come in with the required number of signatures. You might have been shy under the old rule and then would have properly been denied ballot access for not having the proper number of signatures. And so we don't want any surprises. We want the process to work the way it's intended. And so that's my good news, bad news about the election system is we're going to get right, I'm going to bring forward an ordinance to strike the reference that's in the code of ordinances now to the village rule, and go from there, unless there are questions.
I have a question. So for people in the community that are interested in running for office, can they access the packets online, or do they need to come into city hall to get the packets?
They can access them online. So tomorrow, we'll have the final packet. It's going to be made available tomorrow online. And then I'll also have hard copy packets if people would prefer to come in. They can come into the clerk's office between 8:00 and 5:00 and get a packet.
Thank you so much.
Just a reminder, even though they're available, you cannot circulate until the 25th.
Thank you. Are there any questions? We have a question from Alderman Went. Alderman Went?
Well, yeah, I just want to thank both Janine and Dirk for going through this and sorting this out. We've clearly had some information that has been wrong in the past. And I know it's not easy to go against the, well, this is how we've always done it approach. But we need more of that in Moline, because clearly, we were getting some bad advice in the past. And thank you guys so much for cleaning this up.
Don't worry here to do.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Thank you very much. Thank you, Janine. Marty, you're back up. We'll now be going into the informational. Marty is going to present his administrator's update.
Yes, thank you. I want to give everyone an update on the storm from yesterday. If you didn't notice, it'll be Easter. We have informed the public through news release and social media, as well as Government Access Channel, that the city residents, and this is up to you, of course, will be given a reprieve from the usual rules pertaining to brush, branch, and tree disposal. We're asking residents to put their storm damage on the curb or pavement, but not to impede traffic lanes that would keep the lengths less than seven feet. City crews will attempt to pick up the debris on the residents' regular garbage pickup day. And this will be in effect for the next 21 days. And so I would like, if the city council would care to, to pass a resolution this evening to waive the bush brush collection fee under Section 152201 for the next 21 days. I've got more.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the brush collection fee for 21 days under Section 152201 Moline protocol.
We have a motion by Alderman Potter and a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item?
Your Honor, this is Alderman Parker.
Go ahead, Alderman Parker.
Thanks. Sorry to add you about the video call of mine. That should be great. So what about, so if people put their leaves and small debris in bags, are those going to be picked up without stickers?
Yes.
You know what we're talking about here?
Yes. That, and they don't have to bundle it up. Usually, there's a $140 fee for bundling up large pieces of branches and trees and wood as well. So both those items.
And you say you have to curb, but in situations like my neighborhood, it would be in the alley, correct?
That's where you can get your garbage picked up. Yes.
It is. Yeah.
So Alderman Parker, Marty put out a nice press release that kind of described the way that the tree limbs need to be presented and the restrictions on them. They still have the four-inch restriction, but they need to be seven feet long or shorter?
No, longer than seven feet, yeah. Those are from my conversations with J.D. of Public Works. This is what they typically don't press.
So that memo is also available on social media and on the website, I believe. Are there any other questions?
We're calling it on Internet and electricity.
Well, word of mouth, word of mouth as well.
Mayor question?
Alderman Berg?
Yeah, my question is, so as what Alderman Parker just said, so let's say hypothetically, happened in Alderman Parker's front yard. The branch just fell and everything. He would still have to take all that brush and put it in the back of his house because that's where garbage gets picked up, and they are not doing it in the curtain?
No, no. They'll collect it up front.
Okay, so they will do it up front?
Yeah.
Even though the garbage is done for the back?
Yes.
So Alderman Waldron, do you want to kind of give a little history of how that's typically handled?
Alderman Berg, that is typically how it's handled. There are some places, like Alderman Parker said, that it's only available in the alley. And if you have limbs and stuff that's back there, put it back there. But the vast majority will put it in front of their house, and it is collected by the city.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm thinking in front of the house, but if there's cars there, how do they get it?
Well, hopefully, there aren't cars.
Okay, so the resident needs to be aware of what's going on in their street because they need to be able to pull up to it. So if there's, I think if a resident has a question, they should reach out to Public Works.
Yes.
And Public Works would-
We put that in the news release, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments or discussion? This will go on for the- Yes, Alderman Parker?
Parker, yeah. Sorry about that. Kind of get into something else I had a question about. Maybe this isn't the proper time to ask about it. I was sitting in my alley today on my Internet stuff. And I was just kind of digging my house. And I had the opportunity to watch, and we were actually picking up grass clippings today when, you know, where tree limbs are down in the streets and everything. I guess my question was, do we have a on-the-shelf policy for when something like this happens? You know, we don't need to hear from Marty or J.D. or Rod or anybody. You know, if there's a large windstorm with tree damage, the guys, you know, know what to do without having to get direction from someone. Is there anything like that? Any kind of policy like that? Or do we just wait for someone to tell them what to do? Does it seem like maybe the day wasn't the best day to be camp for ashtrays?
That's, you know, I just have a straight question. That's something that I'd have to go back and research. I'll have that discussion. And if we do have something, I'll report that back to you. If we don't, we'll see if we can come up with something.
Thank you, Marty.
Yeah, no, I think if we don't, I think if you're going to have it for all sorts of things like the very attention of snow and ice, and, you know, what is the policy? So we as elected officials can, you know, withdraw our constituents and say, oh, no, no, you know, here's what could be happening. And it's dependent, you know, depending upon what that situation is. Situations don't happen very often, but when they do, everything's, you know, sideways, and everybody's up in arms. And if we had a consistent message right out of the chute to be able to convey that to our constituents.
Okay, yeah, we'll take a close look at that and get back to the city council.
Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Wentz.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Seven I's, no N's.
That motion carries.
A few more things? Okay. Just want to get you a little bit more up to date. So yesterday, we lost power here in this building about 1:50. And so a lot of things went down. We closed the building around 3:00, as well as finance. And one of the things that we lost was our ability to send and receive email externally. Don's been working very hard. He's, I think, got like two hours of sleep last night trying to fix all of our Internet issues. The Internet incoming is still down. Is that correct, Don?
You just need that. Everything else is up.
Yeah, so we can email internally amongst staff. But so if a resident is trying to email us with an issue or trying to email anybody with a Moline dot IL dot US email address, just stop me when I make a mistake now, then they're not going to get through. So we're urging residents who are watching or listening to, if they have an issue regarding a storm cleanup or anything, at this point, they'll need to call us at our offices. So that's, the phone numbers are located on the Internet. And they can call Public Works as well. So that's the best way to get a hold of us.
And so did we post that on social media or our website?
Yes.
So that information got there?
We posted that on social.
And then we'll repost it when our email receives?
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much.
So final thing. So some of our facilities lost power. But most are now operating under regular power. The water treatment plant lost power around 1:45 P.M. yesterday as the east electrical grid went down and then was transferred to the west grid. And that power was lost about 2:30 P.M. So the plant was operating under generator power for 2 until 2:00 A.M., when power was restored. As for the wastewater treatment plants, both of them lost power around 2:00 as well. The south plant pumping equipment only operated under generator power until about 10:30 this morning, when power was restored. This meant all the plant flows pumped into the 23 million gallon storage basin until this morning. And then the north shore power plant is back on regular power as well. One other thing I want to mention is that at 11:00 P.M. last night, the interconnected valves to Rock Island Water were opened under mutual aid agreement as their treatment plant was out without power or backup generator. And so that water was provided until about 2:30 A.M., when their generator power restored service in Rock Island. I know police and fire responded numerous calls. Both those gentlemen are here if you want to talk to them. In addition, the central fire station lost power when their generator failed. And so if you want to ask questions about that, I know the chief is here, but we'll be probably coming back to you with some, ask some guidance on what we need to do there. So do you want to mention anything?
Just real quickly, I, thank you, Marty.
Can you speak all the way up to the microphone because I can't hear you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Department, just to put it in perspective, was about three times the normal volume in our 24-hour shift that ended this morning. So I can't say how proud I am of the firefighters that work for your department because they put in a tremendous amount of effort. The majority of recalls were power lines down, trees on fire. We did have structured fire caused by the storm. The routes of travel were difficult at best to get to where they needed to be. Public Works were out in force clearing those paths for us unbelievably. Police were out blocking traffic and protecting, you know, some of our areas and keeping citizens out of harm's way. Our dispatchers from QCOM, we had a major, three major breaks in the fiber that transmits and allows a communication capability between Marshalltown and our area. Unbelievable, unique challenges. It was like Armageddon. There were periods where police couldn't talk to each other. There were periods when fire couldn't talk to each other, nor dispatchers. As former Officer Williams will relate, that takes away a large piece of your comfort level to know that you can't communicate with your fellow folks. We did have Heritage Woods facility down on, right behind the Highland Toyota, was kind of a unique challenge about 8:30. We had eight patients that were running out of oxygen, and they have no generator for that facility. And so myself and the shift commander stayed down there for about two hours. And we were able to facilitate a bus ride and get them to the needed oxygen. So I can't say no. We're a good team. It went well. So thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Do you want to mention anything?
I didn't have anything quite as good prepared as my colleague, Chief Snyder, there. But I don't have all the data, I guess, although I was a numbers guy and bring the numbers. At one time, I saw we had 150 open calls area-wide on the dispatch screen. So we had over 25 police officers out. The one advantage that we did have was that the timing of the storm allowed us to hold day shift officers over. And so we kept the day shift, and then second shift came on. So we had a pretty good contingent. We deployed all of our other specialty assignments. I went out as well and tried to help. We were starting to dispatch, self-dispatch through our MDT terminals. So just to give you some background of why some of these things are important, interconnect, and we rely on IT and these generators and stuff. All that stuff resides and runs off that generator part. But we were using the mobile data terminals inside the squad cars to dispatch to calls that were coming in because they couldn't dispatch them fast enough. But then we had some radio problems. We were trying to get to, you know, if anybody was trapped or there was downed power lines that were live wires, getting those reported in America as soon as possible. So I would concur and echo Chief Snyder's statement that the team that I saw and participated in with Moline and the public services, the public safety, public works, your public servants did a great job yesterday.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. That's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Are there any comments? We have a comment from Alderman Wentz.
Marty, you said something about the agreement with Rock Island. Was that for water distribution?
Yes.
So we had had a conversation a while back with staff regarding, you know, we get access capacity in our water. Rock Island was considering whether they were going to expand their water treatment plant. And I guess we were told that there wasn't any, I mean, at that time, what I was told was there wasn't any connection between our water distribution system and the Rock Island's water distribution system. And so it would be millions and millions of dollars for us to connect the two systems. But maybe that information that I was told was incorrect, or?
I think J.D. is on the line here. He can probably answer that question better than I. J.D., are you available?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? I'm on local device.
Yes, you can hear me.
Okay, yeah. I'm not sure. Do you remember, do you know the conversation with Alderman Wentz? When we talked about the plant capacity, their demands, their plants? And when they were moving toward their renovation? Do you remember ever talking about the interconnect? Alderman Waldron might remember the name of the study that was done that talked about the interconnect as an interconnect kind of at the high point of both our communities, up somewhere near City Line Plaza. Last night, the interconnect that we opened was one of the lower points. That's the one we've been exercising those out. It's pretty troubling because we weren't sure exactly what was going to happen with us. Each half of it, we use our mutual aid plan. But last night, they had, they had a demand on their system. They pulled their pressures down below, you know, what the EPA requires. I think that's what you saw. They had some boil order notifications come today. And so we opened up that interconnect so we could supply them enough pressure until they could get some pumps going to put water back up in their elevated tanks. And we still, they did that plant renovation, but they didn't put in a generator. So they had no generator power to get their system back up and running. So start on about, actually, they called about 8:00. We started off probably closer to 9:30, but didn't get everything up and running until about 11:00. And then we clicked it back up about 2:30, and they were up.
Alderman Waldron?
Alderman Wentz, we did talk about this in the past. And what you're recollecting is that we can't serve their entire city with our capacity because of different pressure zones. So there are a couple of pressure zones that allow us to feed them, but not their entire city because of elevation and different pressures.
And I guess, the conversations I remember is that River Station, Randy Tweed was there or at River House for lunch. And I guess at the time, I was told that there wasn't, to give them any of our water would have resulted in quite a bit of expense for those connections. But clearly, we could have, but maybe that information just was incorrect at the time. So I was just surprised that we do have those connects after having had that conversation over that much. Okay, thank you.
J.D., I have a question for you. J.D., can Rock Island, can Rock Island support us in case of an emergency as well?
Yes. And I don't know, I remember when we did the plant renovation more slow. We had to close first. I haven't been down there. We brought the interceptor in. We were about 15 or 20 days. We were connected to Rock Island then for our wastewater, we were trying to assist the city down there and used to provide our buildings with Rock Island water for almost 21 days. And that's when coming through that interconnect.
Do we have a similar mutual support setup with East Moline?
Yes, we do. And pre-COVID, we exercised those styles as well.
Pre-COVID? Why, what's the relevance of COVID?
Just when I was walking through with all the teams, you know, our mitigation plans, you know, if we got to the point where we didn't know if we had enough staff to run a plant, you know, all shifts, all days, and whatever, we wanted to have our contingency plans tied together with our neighbors. So we wanted to make sure all those styles were working.
I don't understand the relevance of COVID. So we do have that system in place. It's been in place and continues to be in place. Is that correct?
I haven't heard that.
We do have the mutual system in place with East Moline, and it has been in place and continues to be in place. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Marty.
Yes, and I just want to mention, I'll put together kind of a report clarifying some of those questions for the entire city council.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question for Marty.
Oh, Alderman Berg?
Yes, Marty, and you may have emailed this out, but I didn't. Maybe because of the server, we weren't able to get them. So when we put this new press release out about, you know, the email at the city, did anyone, was anyone going to contact us as the council? Because we're the ones that get the phone calls about, you know, are they going to pick up, you know, the brush and so? up, you know, the brush and so on and so forth? So I don't know how to, obviously you couldn't email us to tell us what, if someone had contacted us or I don't know how that would work out.
Well, it's been a fluid situation. We've had, um, we had no email, then we did have it, then we didn't. So, um, by the time we figured out that we needed to communicate this to the public, including the city council, we were right up here at the city council meeting. So I apologize for not getting that out to you through a phone call perhaps. But as soon as we do have it back, we will, uh, let you know and, um, we'll make sure next time we, we have a plan in place.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Appreciate it. Uh, the next item is the budget update. Carol Barnes?
Thank you, your honor. I don't have a lot to share tonight, so I'm actually going to be talking pretty briefly. But before I start, um, I did send out some information this afternoon by email, so you may or may not have received that, I think you might not have. But it's on the screen and it will be in your email as soon as, as, as soon as we get the internet that helps you can get it. Um, so just very briefly, I just wanted to share some particular information. First of all, the unemployment rate for Moline, this is effective June thirtieth. We have dropped five point four percent since April, down to thirteen point four. We've still got a ways to go, but we are very thankful, um, that some of our people here have been able to get back to work. And we can mix slide on. And the next one is the unemployment rate for the state of Illinois. And our unemployment numbers are actually better than what they are statewide. Again, these are for June thirtieth. And at June thirtieth, the state of Illinois was at fourteen point six and Moline is about two, uh, one point two percent lower than state. And then the last slide on the unemployment is just the national one. This number is actually through July, the only statistic on unemployment that, um, is that current. And for July, um, nationally, the unemployment is at ten point two and dropped about four point five percent through July since April. So just had some information I wanted to pass along. And then the next item. New development has been compiling statistical information on our businesses that have newly opened or closed since the COVID-19 pandemic. And I just thought that I would pass this information along. And the first thing is, is we're very pleased to announce that we have had two new businesses open since the pandemic started back in March. The first one is the Catalina Rose on Fifth Avenue and the C and J Collection Boutique on Thirteenth Street. And then sadly, we did lose three of our, um, businesses that we've had for several years. That's three TGI Fridays and it's a bloom. And we had a couple of other businesses, um, closed due to personal reasons, family retirement, those types of things. And that was the Subway and the Better Life Nutrition. But we're very happy for the two businesses that did open up. And then the last attachment, and I'm going to have you look at the second page down first. I've given you the similar, uh, handout, I think it was back in May, and it is a listing of all of our permits. We've got between eighty and a hundred individual permits that are issued statewide. And I wanted to give you a year-to-date rundown of those. And for, um, year-to-date through July, we have issued one thousand five hundred and twelve permits, totally just shy of two hundred thousand dollars for the current year. However, that is down about fourteen percent from last year at that time. And the dollar amount of the permit has dropped about twenty-nine percent or eighty-one thousand. And so if you compile our amendments that we, we will be providing you in September, um, those types of adjustments do, do those revenues, um, decreasing ever so slightly in the near future. And then lastly, I think we actually have an attachment for you on this. But the council recalls back in March or the beginning of April, um, the council generously implemented a COVID-19 business loan program. We had two rounds of loans. The first one was for fifty thousand, the second was for a hundred thousand. And thirty loans were given out, um, over the, the amount of five thousand dollars each. And I just wanted to give you a heads up that this last week, we received our first payment in full on a five thousand dollar loan came back to the city. And I talked to Dirk this afternoon and I was just wondering if, if I could get direction or get a heads, kind of a, a nod, uh, what the council would like to do. Uh, right now, we're going to be funding five thousand dollars back into the revolving loan program, but I just wanted to know if by chance you wanted to reallocate those dollars and offer another five thousand dollar COVID-19 business loan.
Is there any comment by council? Alderman Wynn?
Uh, yeah, I'd be in favor of, uh, continuous, uh, keeping this rolling, um, uh, for right now, uh, and, uh, trying to get more bang for our buck with it.
Are there any other comments?
Um, one thing that I, I want to direct staff, so we have money allocated for, uh, business loans through the CARES funding, um, but it has different restrictions than what we had on our loan. And so if staff could maybe, um, be cognizant of that as they're awarding loans, there may be someone that only qualifies for one. Um, so we'd want to be careful not to distribute that money unless, uh, it was that, that kind of situation, I think. You know, kind of, um, yeah, just prioritize which, which loans go out and which, to which businesses. But I'm fully supportive of keeping that going. Is there anyone that's not? Do we need to have a motion, Dirk? Are we okay?
No, just looking for consensus.
Okay. Thank you very much, Carol, for suggesting that.
Thank you so much.
Is that it for you? Does anyone have any question? Okay, does anyone have any questions for Carol before we move on? Hearing no questions, we are going to move on to pigeons. Chris Mathias will be presenting this evening amendment to chapter seven, the Moline Code of Ordinances, Keeping of Pigeons.
Thank you, your honor. So I wanted to, Don, do I have the ability to change this with this? Thank you. So I wanted to first, we, I got a complaint. Um, we had a person who resides in the city of Moline who keeps pigeons. And it's a fairly common thing. You'll see there's, there's, uh, racing pigeon clubs around town. Of course, going all the way back to the Belgian community a hundred years ago, I guess it was a thing. But anyway, this particular person who was in the city of Moline has a pen or pigeon coop with maybe twenty pigeons. And then they have an, um, another structure, they have a garage on their site, but it's dedicated to pigeons. So that's, you get about sixty, seventy pigeons in this, in this garage. So, um, as I've researched pigeon keeping more, it's kind of the average number of pigeons that people would keep is about sixty pigeons when you're racing them and letting them out to, um, I think a lot of times during, like, there'll be a time of the day that you let them out and they go and they come back and, and that sort of thing. So we'll talk about at least our current ordinance on keeping pigeons. We don't really have an ordinance to deal with that specifically. Talks about animal cages and, um, in particular, they have to be five feet from all property lines, not less than twenty feet from any other building. And of course, if it's an outdoor bird cage, it has to be three feet off the ground and it gets into the safety of the animal and then you have to keep it clean. You know, it can't be a nuisance to your neighbors, that sort of thing. Um, so one of the questions from the Alderman, I believe, was, well, we have this code about urban hens and chickens. Um, should we really look at having something to deal with pigeons as well? Uh, just to remind you about the urban head ordinance, you have to have a license, which means you'll attend a class on raising, you know, keeping chickens. Um, no more than six allowed on the premises. Has to be a single-family dwelling. You have to have at least four square feet per, per hen. It's got to be five feet within the property line, twenty-five feet within many other principal building, like a home or a church, school, business. And then of course, standards again on owner noise, safety in chickens and animal waste. So that's what you have on, on the books right now for dealing with, uh, with chickens. So, um, what would, if we wanted to pass some kind of ordinance dealing with chickens, I would, my first proposal to council might suggest would be to kind of mirror that code of what you already have with chickens and then tweak it a little bit if you think there's some other standard you need to meet here. In looking at some of the other, not a lot of cities have a specific ordinance to deal with pigeon, but there are some. I found one for Rockdale, like, for example, where I saw that there was actually a, a state statute that says, or a, a county with three million people or less, you can regulate it, but you can't prohibit the owning of pigeons. You can certainly pass an ordinance like this to regulate it. So, um, in keeping with the chicken code, if we want to come up with something, we could, of course, come up with a license that you'd apply for, um, you know, specify the type of structure that you'll keep them in, this, this pigeon coop and other, uh, names that they have for the enclosure. Um, the, the Rocker ordinance had a number of no more than a hundred pigeons, which seemed to me to be a decent number. We're talking about the average being sixty and, and you don't want it to get out of hand. Um, so they had a number of a hundred pigeons. Researching it, it looks like one pigeon for every two square feet of a building is kind of the standard and some said one and a half, some said two square feet per pigeon is kind of the standard for folks that are doing this. Um, of course, it would have to be in a single-family residential area, so this would be something accessory to a residential use. This isn't a business. This isn't, um, you know, somebody renting it to have a club somewhere. This is, somebody resides there and this is their hobby or their, uh, pastime. Um, so we would take the same, we could take these same setbacks from the, uh, chicken ordinance of five from, from all property lines, twenty-five feet from any principal building or church, school, um, and keep these same standards of it has to be in the backyard unless, unless you don't have a backyard and you have maybe a side yard where you could fit it in and meet these standards. The, another thing I found from, I guess, from this Rocker ordinance that of course is different than, um, our chicken ordinance would be that it really gives a timeframe for when these birds are allowed to fly. Um, so it limits it to between ten AM and five PM where you can have these, where you let your pigeons out. It talks about that they, when they come back, they have to go right back into their, to their pens. So if you had a bunch, you can imagine if you had a flock of pigeons and you didn't keep them contained, if they're, you know, uh, if there's animal waste everywhere and that sort of thing. And of course, the other thing we want to keep in here, I think, is if you, if there's any odors beyond your property line, if there's any animal waste beyond your property line that's noticeable beyond, you know, what would occur in nature or whatever, that we can revoke this because you're not following our ordinance. So that would be the, of course, when you look at the chicken ordinance, now, I'm, I'm limiting it down to this, but when you look at it, it's actually, you know, a few pages long with, with that thing. So we would, we would have a, an ordinance, my suggestion would be to have an ordinance that limits that chicken ordinance, but add in some specifications on when they're allowed to fly and, um, like I said, keeping it on animal waste and wherever. My, my other question, I guess, would be, I just didn't have time to ask this staff a little, who's inspecting these? So I know you go to finance and get the permit, I'm like, is this a police issue or, you know, I don't know who goes out and actually inspects the chicken ordinance that we have now, so. So that's my proposal. Be happy to, be interested to hear how we want to tweak it. I can't tell you, I did visit the site, you know, with this gentleman that had the sixty, seventy pigeons. I, there was no nuisance that I could ride up from this, so it wasn't like going beyond property line. I didn't smell pigeons, I didn't, there was no animal waste. Of course, he knew I was coming that day, so we could continue to monitor it as we go, but with this particular, uh, residence, I didn't find any nuisance, so that's there.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any comments or questions for Chris? Alderman Williams?
I had a question on, towards the bottom, it says, uh, "The flying of carrier-homing pigeons at any time may be prohibited if a specific case were satisfactorily established that such pigeons create nuisances for the surrounding property owners." Like in this complaint we had here, one person just didn't want pigeons flying around their house, so that would meet the criteria for that and then going to court, so.
I, I think you'd want to get specific on that, right? So, but as I was saying, odor beyond the property lines would be pretty specific. The noise level beyond the property lines can get specific where we can read, read our leader or whatever. But I think you're right, you want to nail down what?
Or a, a percentage, you know, fifty percent plus of the neighborhood deciding pigeons flying around or.
So if we wanted to go that route, I would first lean on, you know, Dirk and his staff to come up with some other, you know.
Sure, I, I don't want it to be so easy. It's just one complaint, drive them into court and, you know, take away his investment and everything.
You know, I, I think I have a similar concern and that is that, so we had a specific complaint and that's what triggered your research and looking into it and, um, but that specific complaint, even with the establishment of this, we're, we wouldn't restrict that particular situation. Is that correct? Is that what you envisioned? And so I'm just, I'm just challenging, why would we introduce a law that was triggered off of something that it wouldn't restrict?
And that'd be, and that was the other thing. There might be goals from the council that you want me to research this and that's, that's the other input I'd like from you. So if there's a goal we want to accomplish here beyond this, let me know and we'll try to help that.
Alderman Williams?
I think the goal would be to, to, uh, obviously engage the complaint, but to protect the people that have pigeons that are doing it responsibly, you know, from people just making idle complaints because they don't like it. People complain all the time about everything, every little thing. And I think I'd rather see us more pro-pigeon than anti-pigeon, just because what we had in the first ward, large Belgian area, there's still a lot of people that finally remember the pigeons.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think we are kind of in a, in a weird spot right now because I want to be respectful of our culture and, um, make sure that we're not just doing something, just busy work and we're actually being productive with our ordinances and our laws.
And I think just because this situation isn't a problem, you might be comparing yourself to problems down the line, you know? Because right now, because all we have really right now is this is where you complete your bird carriage. Um, it has to be this far away. Just because this complaint might fall in with that and you might have some where you could get out of hand, maybe you want some standards on excessive waste or, or how to control flocks, but, um, that's.
So I think, I think we do, uh, Chris, some guidance, policy guidance, what do we want? Uh, Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, your honor. Um, so, so there, I do have a couple of questions, uh, along these road, uh, these lines. Um, one, uh, are, do you find that, that some of these are doing this as a, as a business? Uh, like where they're, uh, raising them, they're, um, uh, breeding them and then selling, uh, the pigeons? Is, or is there some kind of, uh, commercial aspect to, to these? Or is that, um, uh, taken into account with, with your recommendation?
Yes, and there, that was one of my first questions for this, uh, for this gentleman. When I met with him, I said, you know, the report to me has been that you're, you're breeding them and you're selling them. And he said, no, um, you know, every, maybe every couple of months I trade with somebody or I sell one, but it, to me, it was like if you had, if you collected guitars and you trade them and you sell one or, you know, some other collectible. It was, it was not to, to the level of what I would consider a, a business in the home in talking to this gentleman. Now, if we get, if we get evidence of the contrary, of course, we'll, we would pursue that.
Okay, yeah, I would assume that that would fall under, you know, neighborhood business and they'd have to get a special use permit or, or something like that and go through a, a, uh, another level of review with it. Um, a, a, another question, I, I see a, I kind of like this idea of having a timeframe for when you can let them out and when they have to come back in. Uh, I, I do appreciate the, uh, Alderman, uh, Williams' concern about, you know, the one person, um, having a, a concern, uh, but how would this work as far as waste is? You know, I, you know, I, I guess I, I go by the old Frey Mar, which is now the Ranch Arena, uh, and, you know, uh, you, you drive by there all the time and there is a flock of pigeons, uh, that, um, have nested there for ever over time. And, uh, you know, they used to, uh, have quite a bit of waste that would be on that roof and, and, and those sorts of things. How do we balance that, um, as far as, you know, this thing to happen, you know, on a, on a neighbor's house? I mean, this is very different than chickens. Chickens you keep into your yard, uh, somebody may not like it, but it's just, it's in their yard. If, if, again, if I'm the next door neighbor and I'm having pigeons that are, uh, on my roof and pooping all over the place, you know, I, you know, at that point, I, I think that that becomes nuisance and so would, would that, uh, how does that fit into this?
The interesting thing is when you search pigeon ordinance, the ordinance that you find is like you're just, like you're talking about Alderman Wynn, it's how do we, how do we keep these pigeons out of our downtown or how do we deal with the pigeons around town? So those, those are most of the ordinances that I found when I was, when I started looking for this. So certainly, we could go back and I guess look at some of those ordinances as well as kind of the, the yin and the yang of this of like, hey, is there some, is there a public, is there a public pigeon ordinance that we also need to have on the books to kind of deal with these if they're in our downtown or out of business or something too?
Alderman Williams?
I could see that as something that we would pursue if we had an awful lot of pigeon fasciers and they were, you know, like the old, like even thirty, forty years ago. But I think you can count on one hand the number of people that still keep pigeons and fly them. And so I think we're, we're chasing the problem. so I think we're, we're chasing a problem that doesn't even exist anymore. I mean, the pigeons are gone from 16th Street and 23rd Avenue. They're not everywhere where they used to be. Sacred Ark Church had a shoot where they shot the pigeons off the steeple. And people were up in arms about that not too long ago. That was probably 15, 20 years ago. But the pigeons aren't here. So the few people that have them, I think if we have a general kind of ordinance and, and engage the few complaints that we have, I don't think it's going to be a problem either way.
We, do we have an ordinance for, like, dog waste? And what's that say? Is it specific to dogs or is it just?
I don't have it in front of me right now. We could certainly, it's, it's all in that animal code about how you, how you dispose of it, how you contain it. And I think it's also in the stormwater code as well, because it can become a pollutant. So there's some cross-references in those animal codes to the, you know, stormwater code.
So I'm, I'm just kind of leaning towards something like that, just making sure that there's something that if the waste is an issue for a neighbor, that they have some means of addressing it. But I'm, I'm not really of the thinking along the lines that we would compel the people that have been raising pigeons for 30 years to go out and get licensed for it now. I don't think we have any specific trigger to, to motivate that behavior. But are there any Aldermen that disagree? Alderman, when?
Yeah, I think I'm fine with that. And I think that as long as we have some, as Chris has proposed, some guidelines, you know, make sure that everybody is meeting these, these, these guidelines and then a limitation when it can fly out and about. I think it, it allows for, if there is an issue for us to, to address that particular one, rather than like right now, it's like, well, if something says I can't do anything, so I just get pigeons because I can have pigeons. I think that, that at least gives us a little bit of teeth. But I'd like something added about waste on neighboring properties so that if we do have to enforce something, that that would be a trigger to have.
Is there any other Alderman that would like to weigh in?
Your Honor?
Yes, Alderman Parker.
Yeah, I think that great conversation along with the lines of, you know, the thinking of the council, but maybe wonder, do we, have we had any complaints for, this is kind of more like the bees. Have we had any complaints regarding the bees? Are they under control? Or, you know, because that is a very emotional topic for both sides.
I haven't heard any complaints.
I have, I have neither. I just wondered if anybody had. So, you know, a lot of these things are a real big deal at one time and then kind of just aren't as big a deal as they may be thinking that they are. But I like the idea of having a few rules, or very few rules in place, just to be sure to keep people vigilant about taking care of them.
So I think that we're leaning in the direction of like a paragraph about pigeons and not a licensing, training, intervention program. Thank you so much for researching it, though. That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, that is the last informational. I'd like to open it up for public comments. We do not have anybody from the public here present. Do we have any comments that were mailed in? So I don't believe we have any further business for the Committee of the Whole.
Actually, Mayor, we're going to go in executive session first.
Oh.
For the agenda.
We've decided to skip the executive session.
Oh, we did. We did.
Well, thank you. There you go. We're out of, we're out of the Committee of the Whole. We're into the council meeting. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Burt, do you have an invocation for us this evening?
Here.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Alderman Burt?
Aye.
Williams?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Potter?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
Schoolmaker?
Waldron?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole and Council meeting and close session minutes of August 4, 2020, and appointments made during Committee of the Whole on August 11, 2020. Second meeting ordinances. House Bill 3021-2020, and ordinance in Chapter 20, Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinance, Appendix 6, yield intersections by including 21st Avenue's preference over 14th Street. House Bill 3022-2020, and ordinance in Chapter 20, Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinance, Appendix 7, thereof, one-way streets by including an alley east of 16th Street between 8th Avenue and 9th Avenue traveling northbound. Resolutions. House Bill 1087-2020, resolution authorizing the mayor's city clerk to execute an attestation memorandum of understanding between the City of Moline and County of Rock Island, setting forth the terms for submitting a joint application for funding and submission of a subsequent grant application currently available through the U.S. Department of Justice 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
We, we have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Moyer.
That's it.
Roll call, please. Alderman Burt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. My consent agenda resolutions. House Bill 1086-2020, resolution authorizing a voluntary retirement incentive program for specific employees.
Motion to approve 1086-2020.
Second.
We have a, sorry, Alderman Went, you're just a little bit behind. Alderman Parker has the motion and Alderman Moyer has the second, and Alderman Went is coming in first. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Waldron?
Your Honor, has anything changed since we last talked about this?
Marty will address that.
Yes, we, I took the recommendations of the city council and we revised the proposal so that it's a 50% love sub across all employees that are eligible for the program. We also changed it so that sworn police officers and sworn firefighters who are not eligible. That's only changes we made.
Is there, Alderman Waldron?
A follow-up. Obviously, made my wishes and desires known at the last meeting, but I still hold to that we don't need to pay employees to leave. They'll leave on their own. Marty, how many openings do we have right now in our hiring freeze? I believe, where? In our hiring freeze overall? I believe there's 22. We already have 22 openings. I'm not sure that we need to pay anybody else to leave. I have a very big concern about a brain drain on more people leaving. I'm already questioning the amount, a level of services that we can provide with 22 people gone. Let's say another 10 take it. Now we're down 32. I also have concerns about how we're going to pay this out of the reserves. So I just want to go on record saying I do not support this. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Waldron. Alderman Potter?
I would, I'm a complete agree with the president of the whole.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
After the last meeting, I had an opportunity to kind of pick some brains and look into that and think about it myself. And I also am against that. I think that it puts us in a bad position.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Alderman Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I, and I appreciate the, the comments of the, the other Alderman, although I, I do believe the, the idea that if, depending on how many people take this, that we're going to be in a situation where we wouldn't then be able to maybe hire back and fill some of those positions. We, we obviously have that at our ability. So if, if there was a large number of people who took this, the, the comment or the argument that we are going to be now down 30-some people, we, we would clearly be able to rectify that. You know, I, I'm in support of this. We had a conversation about it. Cities, municipalities, you know, we, we had the discussion that Bettendorf did something very similar to this just a few years ago. This is something that communities do on a, a, a frequent basis. And it, it's there because we do have some people who have tapped out. They are, as we say, redlined. They are above what our class and comp of city says that, that capable people in the, in a similar job would be earning. And long-term, it is less expensive for us, for those, those people that are redlined and above those situations, even with a, a small payout upfront. Long-term, it is much less expensive for the city with, for those, those positions. And so we have limited this. It is not, obviously, for the entire population of our employees. But I think it is a, a very good and targeted approach, and so I'll be supporting it.
Marty, would you mind just explaining why you're making this recommendation to the council this evening?
Yeah, I, you know, we've looked at best practices. We've looked at how do we cut budget to accommodate the slowdown of revenues from COVID-19 pandemic. You know, there's some people believe that, well, we should, we will, 2021 will be better. I'll give it a 50% chance it'll be better. We don't know. And if we are to continue to maintain and provide the services that we do provide, I think that we're setting ourselves up by doing this for long-term fiscal help. When I gave the presentation earlier to the city council, I said, you know, let's shoot for end of 2021, you know, being at 20 to 25% reserves of our net operating income, because we don't know what's happening for the rest of the year. We don't know what those revenues are. Those revenues are coming in higher than our COVID budget, but still 10 to 15% below our traditional budget. So lopping off the top salaries through a early retirement package allows us to restructure, refill, fill positions up from the bottom, and over the long term, provides us with a lot of cost savings in 2021, 2022, and forward. I know it's difficult to provide the services that we're providing. Public works, police, fire, everyone is doing one, two, three jobs at a time. And I know that, you know, additional people leave, that it's not going to get easier. But we can work pretty aggressively, knowing who's left, to provide a structure that in the long term, I think will, again, save money, will get more cost-effective delivery of services, and provide fiscal help to the community.
And I know that, like, some of our for-profit corporations around here, like John Beer, they offer incentives like this, but it's not fair to ask you because you weren't here at the time, but Carol was a big part of it. Carol, would you mind explaining to us what motivated the action by Bettendorf a couple of years ago to incentivize early retirements? What was that about and what was the outcome? Can you kind of explain that to us? We can't hear you, Carol. Sorry.
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes, thank you.
Your asking regarding by Bettendorf's turn to that early retirement incentive?
Yeah, what, yeah, what was their situation that motivated that and what was the outcome of it? If you could kind of give us a synopsis of that.
Yes, for the first time in actually several decades, the city was faced with not being able to balance the budget without potentially increasing the levy rate. And so we looked at various options to, for the, to our council. And we had a program very similar to what is in front of Moline. And it, a little more than 50% of our staff that had been Bettendorf's staff that were offered the program did take advantage of it. We had originally thought that it was the payback would be over a 17-month period, and we were very happy to see that there was a payback of less than 12 months. And the reason for that was because of the restructuring and the trickle-down with other positions in the city that got promoted up. And it, it worked very, very effectively. And I know I've heard, I've heard the Bettendorf mayor and the city administrator say that was one of the best things they felt that they could have done at that time versus looking at layoffs or potential furloughs for the employees.
Thank you, Carol. I just, I want to make sure that we have all of the information that we can have when we make important decisions like this. So thank you very much for that additional information. Are there any other comments?
Your Honor?
Yes, Alderman Parker.
Yeah, thank you. Although I could not agree more with Alderman Waldron regarding the brain drain that's always concerned, I kind of look at it from another way, another very different perspective than that, with a lot of opportunities for particularly internal candidates that have been coached up by the people above them in the organizational chart to take a, take their shot at the title and maybe bring a different look at things and a new first look at things, building upon the, the, the discovery that had been taught by their predecessors. So although we're going to be, hopefully, you know, we will be okay, I truly believe we will. I mean, I've experienced this in other organizations I belonged in. I, I believe we're going to be okay. I think it's a great opportunity for us to maybe take that next leap that we wouldn't be able to if we didn't have a first set of eyes reading our organization.
Thank you, Alderman Parker. Are there any other comments? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Williams?
Nay.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
Waldron?
Nay.
Four ayes, three nays. Motion carries. House Bill 1088-2020, resolution approving the final plat for Southview First Edition and two-left subdivision of John Year Road and 41st Street.
Group 88, morning. Second.
Were you going to present something, Chris? I don't want Chris to miss his opportunity. Do you have anything you want to share with us?
Um, well, yes.
So I think we had a motion by Parker. Was that written, a second by Went?
Thank you.
So we had, we had some issues discussed last week. The staff wanted to follow up on. So I apologize to the folks that are on, that are on the call that I can't distribute these to, but if you wouldn't mind passing around this, there's, there's two sheets for each one. There's a, there's a, there's an improvement plan there and there's a bike waste plan map. So anyway.
Chris, is there something critical that we need to share? Because we can do it with that little, that thing that's in front of Alderman Potter. I don't know what it's called. And, do you need to?
What I wanted to show was, we're going to talk about a bike path, and I know that this is something that came up. So I guess if you have a ability to get on and show us our plans, we've got these two, but.
Thank you.
If you, if you go to the planning department's webpage, there's a lot of plans and studies. We could just bring up the bike waste plan. Am I going to?
I think it's the one where we're at.
Say that?
Even if it's like on your website.
Yeah, so if you went to the Moline dot IL dot U webpage, you just want to our planning department, there's a, there's a plan and study.
Thank you. One moment, please. We're doing a little coordinating on this.
I think it's like FaceTime that has a map. So, I'm sorry, Your Honor.
Thank you.
So last week, presented this final plat to you, just to, to remind everybody, if you can look, Lot 1 and Lot 2, Lot 1 splits off from the old John Year Medical site. We, the city council's already rezoned that piece of land to B3.
The city council has already rezoned that piece of land to B3. And so Lot 1 represents what will be split off and rezoned to commercial, to accommodate a three-tenant building with a new Ponchero's restaurant, and then possibly some other retail restaurants with those other two tenant spots. So the staff recommendation on this is to approve. We talked about sidewalks last week, and the staff recommendation being there to support a variance to come, where the developer would put the portion, the amount of money to build a sidewalk along 38th Avenue into the sidewalk fund. And we've talked about that with the developer, and really anticipated that happened later, and that was the staff recommendation there. So the staff recommendation is to approve this final plat. Two issues that were raised last week, one was stormwater. I can tell you, if you could go back to the presentation real quick, Don, I just want to show them the, yeah, and then the next slide. So we talked about stormwater last week, the proposed stormwater detention area shown to the south. There was a question on what that would look like. That would be an open pit, it's got three basins in there where the water will drain, flows to the south.
Excuse me, correct, online, it's still on the bike ways. Thank you.
Thanks, Alderman Went, for drawing their attention to that.
So that water will flow to the southwest, you know, after it falls into the basin, flows to the southwest on the John Dear Road. So there was a question about maintenance going forward on these stormwater areas. I can tell you that one, the position that handles that right now is the environmental manager position, that's not a built position. So Chad, before he left the city, he's got a list of every stormwater detention area that he knows about in the city, and was going to start citing them. They have a one-year kind of preliminary inspection they have to do every year, and a five-year major inspection. So we do have ordinances on the books right now to go out and maintain these areas. The only thing I didn't see in there was like, you know, trash collection, those sort of things. And talking to engineers, they're like, well, that's kind of a, obviously, this pool of trash is really not working properly, but we could add a little bit in our code to deal with. If you have specific issues you're seeing around town, we could add that to chapter 34, but that is an environmental manager's role, and when that position's built, I'm sure they'll jump right on some of these existing sites. The other issue that was raised, in talking to Alderman Went, was some questions on the bike ways plan. So for the folks that are here, I've passed it out, and Don, if you could go to that bike ways plan we found, it was page 10 of that plan, I believe. We can get that up online and in here eventually. That was the problem I was having with that map, was I couldn't get it to be how you have it there, where it's kind of turned around direction.
Portraits.
Anyway, the point of this map that I want to show you is there's about, within about a quarter mile of anywhere, the idea of this plan, and I think it was the former mayor who really pushed for this, was to have bike paths near about a quarter mile from anybody in town, and to really push this bike ways plan. So it is, that map is actually, was actually approved as part of our comp plan, this map. It was the one that I passed around to you here, this bike ways plan. So as you can see, the 38th Avenue corridor is shown as a potential bike path area, potential bike way. So that was something that was raised by Alderman Went, I want to point out to you. That hasn't been a discussion that we've had with the developer, you know, putting in a bike path here, and it hasn't been something that staff have considered in the past with development. If you look at our code, we have a sidewalk requirement. So as I think more about this, if this was something we wanted to require, we really wanted to push for, you know, bike paths next to development, especially when there's a subdivision like this, my suggestion to the staff would be to actually get that in the code like we have for sidewalks, possibly go through these corridors and really discuss specifically, what do we want on each of these corridors? Now, if it was turned correctly, I could show you that, for example, there's some residential streets on here that show there are bike ways. So do we want the same level of bike path in a residential area as we do along, you know, Colton Road here, or along a major arterial like, you know, 27th or the 19th Street corridor or something, where we've got already some other plans? So that was raised by Alderman, it was raised by Alderman Went. I want to tell you, that issue of policy here, I guess, and if we want to require a bike path and those type of things, you know, that issue was raised, and I just want to put that out there. So I can tell you also, the developer, Ryan Went, he's on the call tonight, so if you have any question for him, he's out there too. Like I said, he's agreed to put, he's agreed to apply for that variance and put that money into the sidewalk fund, whatever it costs to build this sidewalk here. So you know everything I know, and I'm happy to ask any question, answer any questions you have, and like I said, the developer's on the call, if you have questions for him as well.
I have a question. Is there enough space to put a bike path in at a later date?
Good question. That was, Laura Power and I talked about that, she's the inner city engineer, she estimates we'd need about 10 feet additional right of way to put a bike path in. Now, that was considering a separate bike path, you know, from the roadway.
And would that additional 10 feet of right of way interfere with the parking lot structure that is demonstrated in this drawing?
It would not interfere, from what I can see, it would not necessarily interfere with the development itself, but in, you know, in talking to the developer, I mean, that is, is land that, you know, he's, I don't think he's willing to just give away 10 feet of his property, you know, without the kind of, like you said, he's, in talking with him, he's happy to put it into the sidewalk fund. He's even talked about, hey, you know, 10% more than what a sidewalk costs, if you want a little bit extra in there to cover for a bike path, you know, but he wasn't keen on the idea of, you know, donating his property for no money.
Understood. Alderman Went?
Yes, thank you, your honor. And Chris, thanks for bringing this up. I mean, and Chris and I have had a couple of conversations along these lines. I mean, clearly, this bike ways plan, I think that it was adopted and as part of the comprehensive plan, I think back in 2011, but unfortunately, we had some staff members that are no longer with us, that even though it was adopted and policy of the council, they ilaterally kind of made the decision that they weren't going to enforce it, and not implement it throughout the city. And so we're now at this situation where, with my conversations with Chris, that staff is prepared to move forward with the policies that the council has adopted in that plan, the cap plan that we have in place. And so I think we'll talk about this maybe a little bit in other tonight, but as it pertains to this specific subdivision, I think what I would like to do is make the approval contingent upon us having or being designed in a way that there is enough room for us to install at a later date a bike way along Colton Road on the south side of that road. And so I, so my amendment would be to make this contingent upon that being part of this subdivision.
For clarification, thank you. For clarification to Alderman Went, who made the motion, and Alderman Parker, are you suggesting that we would make accommodations with the right of way restriction at this time, or are you suggesting they just wouldn't build on that area?
So that as part of the approval of the subdivision, that the ultimately how it is built will accommodate a bike way along, an off-road bike way along the south side of Colton Road or 38th Avenue.
And your suggestion is we would negotiate the right of way at a later time?
No, they would have to dedicate that as part of the subdivision.
Okay, just to clarify. So now we'll discuss the amendment. I'd like to hear from the developer, if he's on. What's your position?
I'm right here.
Hi.
Sorry, I'm at a restaurant right now, pulling open down that white bike, a little background noise, I apologize.
Thank you for joining us.
Can you all, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. I just wanted, this is the mayor, I just was hoping to get your perspective on this, if you think that it would enhance your property to have a bike way or?
Yeah, definitely. I'm a big proponent of bike trails in general, I'm a huge adversary to random, I think myself. And it doesn't really affect our development, we have enough right of way there to give an additional 10 feet for the development and to allow an additional bike path in future. I would be having the same conversation with myself for the council as well. My only question is, if I'm going to give up 10 foot by hundreds of feet of access to my land, am I required to still contribute to the sidewalk fund going forward?
I think that's a reasonable argument. What's the council's perspective on that? Do we have any council opinion? Alderman Potter?
I guess my bigger concern I have is that if there's a bike way plan along Colton Road, I'm not so sure that there's available land heading west, some of the previous buildings that were put in there, I'm not sure will allow for, you know, a bike way to continue on, you know, I see to the left over there, like, exotic tides and the counterwash and those other things. I'm a huge proponent of the link, those two, but I'm just not sure there's, I think we're looking at a link that is not going to go anywhere, and I could be wrong.
Well, my argument to that is that it's a plan, and so you plan from this point forward, and there's no perfect place to start, but this is a very decent place to start, and we have a cooperative developer here that could help us get a foothold and move forward from that point. Alderman Went?
Your honor, and as far as this particular location, yeah, I think that it would be reasonable that as part of the variance process for not installing something, it would be for a sidewalk, not for a bike path, because I don't disagree with Chris Mathias that we probably need to update our ordinance for these properties that are adjacent to our bike way plan, that we should be responsible for that. And I don't think that's in our code right now, so, so, yeah, I think it would just be for the lower amount of the installation. Now, you don't have to install it now, hopefully, down the road, we'll get a grant or give an east-west connection on Colton Road to do it. And I understand what Alderman Potter is saying, but again, if we don't start this, then this is just going to be one more location along the way where we're going to have to spend more money on retaining walls and obtaining right of way and those sorts of things. If you go east as part of the new John Dear Road and everything, and you go all the way down to like Biest Road, there is a bike path that that Colton Road turns into to go up there. And so we eventually want to do that and then connect to the bike path that was installed for the overpass on John Dear Road. And so this is something that, there are connections already in place to the east and to the west, and it's my hope that we will eventually connect those and make our community much safer for alternative transportation, and so that's why this would be the time to start that process.
So Alderman Went, I believe, I don't want to misspeak, but I believe that the developer was interested in us waiving that contribution of the sidewalk investment in lieu of giving up the right of way. I think that was what the proposal was.
Right, and I was not saying that we would do that, that we would say that it was only for a sidewalk installation, not for a bike installation, so I'm okay with the amount for a sidewalk, but not for a bike path.
But you're not willing to give up the amount for the sidewalk in order to get the right of way?
Well, no, I mean, I'm not sure if that's necessarily a negotiation. I mean, they're asking for a subdivision of the property, we can make that subdivision contingent upon us giving that additional right of way as part of a plan. I don't think that there's any problem with us making that conditional.
Okay, so we do have an amendment on the floor right now, and it is to accommodate right of way, make a right of way allocation to support a bike path in the future. Did you have something you wanted to say, Alderman?
No, I just wanted to say.
So let's take a vote on the amendment, that that property allocation will happen. Do you understand, Alderman Went? So the amendment was to modify the right of way, to extend it so that there would be in the future an opportunity to put a bike path on there. There wouldn't be a bike path today, though. Right now, the right of way does not support that.
So it would dedicate 10 feet of right of way on the south side. Mike Went's proposal would be to dedicate 10 feet of right of way on that property.
Well, if staff feels that 10 feet is the, is the, I think that's what you said, the city engineer said that it would grant it, if that's the case, then yes.
Alderman Williams?
And the developer does not have the thing to cover to the sidewalk fund?
That wasn't part of the amendment. So that would be, you could offer a second amendment if you'd like to. Alderman Waldron?
I'd like to offer that second amendment, that the, what he would pay in the sidewalk would be waived in lieu of him giving us the 10 feet.
Can I amend an amendment? I can't remember how many there is.
Yeah, I had the same question. I don't know, where's the, is the variance, the sidewalk part of this subdivision plan approval?
Right, so it would be a next, it would be a next step, you know, to apply for that variance of the sidewalk, that would be a next step. And there's actually two types of variance you can apply for, one will be the in lieu of payment, and the other one would just be a variance.
Because there doesn't show a sidewalk, so I don't know how we documented that there's not, we're approving the life area with no sidewalk, but also approving the variance here.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Forgive us, Dirk's coming up.
I'm lost in where we are in terms of the approval. This is a plat of subdivision that's before you for approval, there's no sidewalk on it, and I don't know where the variance request to approve it without a sidewalk, where the variance that says he's contributing to the fund is, and then that makes it more complicated to decide how we're going to do this proposal, that in lieu of making that contribution to the sidewalk fund, he would give to the city the additional 10 feet of right of way, which is where people are. Alderman Went's proposal was he'd be willing to support the, as I understand it, the variance, not to have the sidewalk, but to contribute to the sidewalk fund, and still require the additional right of way of 10 feet for the bike way. But I don't know, where's the vehicle that's documenting the variance on the sidewalk?
Well, that would be something that happens later.
Can you say to that microphone, they just can't hear you.
So the variance would come, the variance would come after this, or, I mean, they, I guess they could apply for it now, or whatever, but like, it would, the variance is a separate action from this, and it hasn't been applied for yet.
So the plat, so there's no variance applied for, and there's a plat without the required side?
The sidewalk would be on the site plan when it goes to be developed or whatever, and that's typically what I would look for, even come here with your building, like your site, you know, make sure your sidewalk is on there.
As a parliamentary procedure, I think that the amendment to the amendment is actually out of order, because it's not germane to what we are considering right now, so I'd ask the chair to squate that amendment to the amendment, because it's out of order.
And so we haven't accepted it yet, so we'll, let's move forward with this particular amendment, but I think that we, once we go back to the main motion, we may have some issues. So we have this particular amendment, which would be allocating an additional 10 feet of right of way. Alderman Potter, did you have a comment before we go to vote?
Yeah, because I'm concerned about the attorney's comments, generally, if we approve these things, the sidewalk is included, or all the amenities are included in the plat. If we approve this now, I'm the developer, I'm thinking, I don't see a sidewalk on there.
So can we have that discussion in just a moment? I think right now, we're just determining if we're giving guidance for the additional right of way, which isn't reflected in the plat either. So can we do that amendment vote, please? Roll call, please. And this is approving the additional 10 feet. Alderman Byrd?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays? That motion carries. So now we have an amended motion on the floor, which is to approve this plat with the additional 10 feet of right of way. We have a couple of options right here. We could table it, if we're uncomfortable with what's being reflected in this document that we're approving. We could further amend what we're seeing here by addressing the sidewalk. We could further amend what we're seeing here by addressing the sidewalk just by description. So what's the council's interests this evening? Alderman Waldron.
Your Honor, I'd like to amend it to include, if it's possible, a waiver of the fees that he would pay in the sidewalk in lieu of us, him just giving us the 10 feet.
Okay, so your amendment would include the waiver of the sidewalk requirement?
Correct.
Without any fees to be paid?
Correct.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer to incorporate into this particular vote, the waiver of the sidewalk and any additional fees that we would charge for that waiver. Is there any discussion on that amendment? Alderman Went.
I guess I'm going to speak out against this amendment, I think for a couple of reasons. One, this is an action, we're taking a preemptive vote on a variance that may or may not be requested into the future. And two, we have an insane amount of sidewalk and bike ways and locations and info that we need to do throughout the city and I don't think that is probably a proportionate to waive this completely because otherwise they would have at least provided enough funds to do a sidewalk of that length. If, once the variance is applied for and that is then before us, we can have a conversation at that point, but I think that this is too early in the process to do a preemptive waiver of fees, so I will not support it.
Alderman Waldron.
I don't think it's any more preemptive than just snatching 10 feet of his land without giving him any cost for it. So I don't agree with Alderman Went's opinion.
Thank you, Alderman Waldron. Did Alderman Berg want to say something? I thought I heard you pipe up there.
I did not hear.
Thank you. Alderman Went.
Yeah, I guess the characterization that you're snatching 10 feet of someone's land, this is right-of-way, they still own the property, they're still be responsible for it, that you're not snatching it, it just is an area in which we are then able to put public improvements onto, that which I would argue in the long run, when there's a bike path along there, that it is actually going to increase the value of their property and that is, that bike path is going to be done 100% on the public dime if they do not contribute into this fund. And so I think it's short-sighted to say that this is something that is a negative to that property. I think once that bike path is in place, it is going to increase the value of all of those properties. And so again, that's why I'm going to vote against this.
Well, we don't want to, we don't want to argue. Do you have another comment?
No, I just, I have a comment that we do pay for right-of-way frequently from private property all around town. It's not uncommon.
Thank you. Were there any other comments by the council? So now we'll entertain a vote on this amendment. It is for allowing the developer to not install a sidewalk and not pay an additional fee. Janine, would you please roll call?
Sure. Alderman Berg.
No.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Nay.
Went.
Nay.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Four ayes, three nays.
That motion carries. We now have a main motion on the floor and that motion includes approving this plat with the modifications we discussed this evening, which is an additional 10 feet of right-of-way, no sidewalk and no sidewalk contribution to our sidewalk fund. Did I restate that properly? Is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? Alderman Went.
Is this just a waiver of the sidewalk requirement on 38th or is this a waiver of sidewalk requirement on the entire parcel?
So there's, per IDOT, there cannot be a sidewalk on John Deere Road and 41st Street was rebuilt with the sidewalk taken out. So per our engineering, there cannot be a sidewalk along 41st Street either, if that's what you're asking, Alderman Went.
Alderman Went.
Is, I guess, was that something, if you, and if it was, can you share with us that IDOT has a prohibition against a sidewalk there? I thought it was just as their design, that he would pay for it on the, on the west side, but I guess I didn't realize that it does have a prohibition from providing sidewalk along 41st along there.
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know if prohibition's the right word, I guess, but in talking to my engineering staff, they, they did not want, you know, they don't want a sidewalk on John Deere Road for sure and then 41st Street, like I said, was just redesigned. So they, so, you know, I was, I was told there wouldn't even need to be a variance for those two locations because we're not asking for it to be installed there.
Alderman Went.
Yeah, if we could get some clarification on that because I was under the impression from most of the conversations I'd say I was getting was that that was just because of, it was an undeveloped area that was drainage ditch, that they just designed it to save some money, not to put a sidewalk there. Not that there was a prohibition from putting it there, it was just the state, that was a way that the state could save some money because that area had not yet been developed.
We can check on that, that's for sure.
Clarification is, though, I believe that we are waiving all of the sidewalk and all of the fees at this time. Alderman Went.
Then I'd like to make an amendment that depending on what Chris finds, that we would not be waiving it along 41st if indeed they have the ability to put a sidewalk along 41st.
Is there a second for that amendment?
Okay.
We have a motion by Alderman Went and a second by Alderman Parker to retain the requirement for a sidewalk along 41st. Is there any discussion on that amendment? Roll call, please.
Alderman Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Nay.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Nay.
Moyer.
Aye.
Waldron.
Nay.
Four ayes, three nays.
That motion carries. We now have an amended motion on the floor that restricts or allows the variance of no sidewalk along 38th Avenue, still retains the requirement for a sidewalk along 41st Street.
Your Honor, only effect is able to be done through IDOT. If there is a prohibition, then clearly they wouldn't want it there.
And that's 41st or IDOT's John Deere Road?
So the intent was that it was conditional on what we found from that.
Thank you, Alderman Went. There's a little sidebar discussion right now and 10 feet of right-of-way. One moment, please. Could we have some direction from staff of how, what, is, are we stating publicly that IDOT is restricting us from putting a sidewalk in 41st?
Alderman Went wanted some clarification on that, so I'm going to have to go back to our, to our city engineer and get the actual, you know, if it's prohibition or whatever it is, I don't want to guess on that. But I mean, I'm just telling you from our engineering staff standpoint, it wasn't even a, it was, you know, there was no sidewalk requirement along 41st or 41st Street, nevermind. 38th was the only, you know, the only thing that was up for a variance.
Thank you.
So we'll go back to them and I can get the actual description of why that is.
Okay, and so will you come back to us next week with that? Can you do it that quickly? So that we can get some clarity for the developers so he understands what we're asking for? Is that all right? Alderman Moyer.
One thing I don't understand, just looking at this, is, because there's sidewalk coming down 41st Street and then 38th Avenue. If you get to John Deere Road, are you even able to cross it out?
We don't want to cross it.
Not there, right?
No. I mean, I think, let me think, I just did a trash pickup on this corner. I don't think there's sidewalk.
They moved it to the other, yeah, they moved the sidewalk to the other side of the street. I don't know if they moved it, but they restricted it to only the west side of the street.
All right, does everybody understand what we're voting on this evening? No?
No.
Not completely.
And it sounds like the confusion here is whether, is that wording for like 41st Street, whether you want to require that or not. So I mean, we can, we can get, we can get the fine details on, on why engineering didn't require that for 41st next week. That's, that's a little fun for you.
So for clarity, yes, Alderman, I'm not sure if that was.
Parker.
Alderman Parker.
This is Parker, yeah. Since this is, this is a final vote on it, right? Should we table this to give more information?
You'd be, that certainly is your priority.
All right, Ryan, wait a minute, Alderman. I'm a little confused.
Sorry, wait.
I'm really confused. I've been switching from bike path to sidewalk, back to sidewalk. I'm a final reading, I've been, been doing content to city staff, been engineering over the last two months, three months. I'm okay with the bike path in general and, but given the land, I don't want to make this any more confusing than it needs to be for anyone involved. I'm a big proponent of working with council staff and any development I do. For 10,000 to just a few sidewalks or a few thousand dollars to get this approved, so let me know what I can do to alleviate a lot of time and effort on staff's hard work.
Ryan, I, I'm sorry that we're hashing this out, but this is our opportunity and we do everything in open, so it's typically the, you know, first time that we have an opportunity to really discuss it. And one of the things that we're discussing right now is if we give you a variance, it's a variance forever. And the council's making sure that that's something that we're willing to do for years and years and years, that there'll be no sidewalk along 41st, so it's the backside of your property that you won't develop on. I assume, I don't think you have any plans to develop on that area. So that's the part where we're discussing right now. We want to make sure that we don't make a mistake that we can't fix later. Sorry for you having to be witness to it. Alderman Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think from what my notion was is that along 41st, that if there is a prohibition and IDOT doesn't want it, then clearly there, there won't be a sidewalk there and it won't be a problem. But my motion was if IDOT says that you can, then there would need to be a sidewalk installed there or the variance would be applied for and we could work with them on a delayed installation or a payment in lieu of that sidewalk. Because in the future down the road, like we said, if we give a complete variance, then it's in perpetuity that there's not going to be a sidewalk up there. So I think we'll be able to move forward. We just need clarification from staff on what IDOT's position is for a sidewalk like that.
May I restate the motion?
Yes, please. Janine's going to restate the motion for everyone.
From what my understanding of it, the motion was to retain the requirement for a sidewalk along 41st Street on condition that IDOT allows this.
Is that correct? Yeah. And then the rest of the motion? How are you going to capture the rest of it?
I don't know where we're at with that.
Yeah, that's, that's already, that amendment already passed. So that's just, we, we're now looking at a motion on the floor that was amended three times, so there's three amendments. That was just one of them. That's already been voted on and that passed.
Back to discussing this.
Well, I think that they're debating that component of the overall motion and how to resolve this. We don't really know where that came from right now and so Chris is going to investigate that part of it. So we have, we have a motion on the floor to approve this plat. We have made amendments that will allocate an additional 10 feet of right-of-way, will waive the sidewalk along 38th Avenue, but does not waive the sidewalk along the 41st Avenue unless it was demonstrated by staff that IDOT prohibits it. So that's the motion on the floor and we can vote for it or against it. Are we ready for a vote? Roll call, please.
Alderman Berg.
I'm sorry, Mayr, can you say that again? I'm still...
So...
I'm just, oh gosh.
Good.
I've been so much here, so can you do that one more time?
The motion on the floor is to approve the plat as presented with three amendments. One is it'll, it'll allocate an additional 10 feet of right-of-way. It will waive the requirement for a sidewalk along 38th Avenue with no fees incurred. It will retain the requirement of a sidewalk along 41st Avenue or 41st Street unless it is prohibited by IDOT. It does not prohibit the developer from requesting a variance for installing the sidewalk along 41st Street or negotiating a payment towards the sidewalk fund in lieu of it. Does that make sense?
Aye.
You've got an aye. Got an aye out of Berg.
Thank you. Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Nay.
Moyer.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay.
That motion carries. Thank you very much, Chris. And thank you, Ryan, for joining us this evening. And thank you for your development. We're excited about it.
Thank you. I really appreciate your time today and I'm looking forward to bringing some of the neat projects here, Gabriel.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say, Mayr.
Thank you. I might now like to open it up for misleading business of the council. I'm going to go around the council chambers if anyone has anything they would like to discuss with the council. Alderman Williams.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Parker.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alderman Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got a couple of quick ones, roughly a quick. One is in, Chris during his comments talked about the open pits and the stormwater drainage in the lane and I know Erica Williams had been the person, I think there was someone in between and now. What I'd like us to do is direct staff to put together a one or two page memo on exactly how those culvert waterways drainage ditches are redeemed by staff, who's responsible for them and what is the process to ensure that they are cleaned by the adjacent property owners. Because, you know, we've had this discussion multiple times regarding, you know, along 16th Street, who's responsible. The city's spent a lot of money on drinking those ditches, but then other times, the adjacent property owner is responsible, like by the, the car dealerships and so, if they could put together a more two-page memo to us so that we better understand exactly what our ordinance says and who was responsible for those things and why we have so many open pits rather than culverts in the city, that would be great. So my motion would be for us to direct staff to provide that.
Is there a second? We got a second by Alderman Parker. Is there any discussion on that direction? Roll call, please.
Alderman Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Nay.
Moyer.
Aye.
Waldron.
Nay.
Four ayes. Five ayes, two nays.
That motion carries. Is there anything else, Alderman Went? Alderman Went?
Yeah, as it pertains to the bike ways plan, I think Chris brought up a important point that this has been part of our comprehensive plan now for nine years and it really has not been integrated into our code or really been implemented by staff in projects that have been engineered throughout the city. Yeah, as it pertains to the bikeways plan, I think Chris brought up a important point that this has been part of our comprehensive plan now for nine years, and it really has not been integrated into our code, or really been implemented by staff in projects that have been engineered throughout the city. And so I guess I wanted to get some feedback from the council on maybe giving direction to staff about coming back on how to implement the bikeways plan into our code, and a, I guess, a roadmap for that implementation, whether that's including the Complete Streets Committee, or just staff coming back with a roadmap. I'd like to, for us to direct staff to come back with a proposal, and having before, to implement this into our code and the projects we have with the city.
We have a motion by Alderman Wett and a second by Alderman Parker. And I'd like to say, we always refer to the previous mayor, and I think we're referring to Mayor Welber, who was the mayor at the time that this was implemented. And I've got to tell you, I'm, I'm that mayor, too. I'm a strong proponent of developing our bicycle-friendly community. And so I'm one of those mayors, too. Is there any discussion on this motion? Alderman Wett?
I guess the only question is, if we are going to vote for this, I guess, maybe hearing back from staff on what their reasonable time, or I don't want to put a timeframe on it of, you know, we say two weeks, and there's no way we can come back with a roadmap in two weeks. If Marty can both for this and the other, maybe sometime this week can send out to us what is, what your plan is for getting back to us. That would be great.
Marty, do you have it? Was that something reasonable that we could ask you to do, to give us a feel for how long it would take and communicate that back to us?
It's hard for me to say how long it would take at this moment, but...
Yeah, he's, Alderman Wett, you were, you were talking, but Alderman Wett was just saying that maybe you could talk to your team and give back to us in the next week or two. Perfect.
Reasonable timeframe, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, just, just give us an update of how long it'll take. You know, it may take three months, it may take six months. We just want to have a feel for when it'll be done. Thank you, Alderman Wett, for that clarification. Is there any further discussion on this direction? Roll call, please.
Alderman Byrd?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Wett?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Alderman Wett.
And then the last thing is, I just want to really thank the Public Works Department and our staff with everything that's been going on with the storms. I was involved with a couple of issues with residents, but as many or more residents who have reached out to me just unsolicited, saying thank you for how well staff has been out there helping and being attentive and responsive to, to issues. So kudos to our staff, Ratchik, and all the crew down at Public Works. Thank you guys so much for everything you did when disaster strikes in the lane. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wett. Alderman Potter?
I, too, would like to thank all the staff that was available yesterday for their quick action, preventing, could have been some more serious things going on. They did a great job. Thank you.
Alderman Moyer?
Yeah, I just, I feel the same thing. We had police cars drawing our neighborhoods, asking, checking on neighbors to make sure everything was okay. I used to want the city was, was out there, and it was good, good people, safe.
Thank you, Alderman Moyer. Alderman Waldron?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Byrd?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. I now like to open it up to staff. Does there any committee have for the council this evening? I'd now like to open it up for public comment. Is there any comment this evening? There's no public comment. Is there an executive session this evening? An executive session? Is there any further business for the city council? Hearing none, we are adjourned.